All right, we'll call tonight's meeting to order. Right after I put my glasses on. Um, as we start out every meeting, we will read the mission statement for, which I don't think I said the date for tonight's meeting, February 9th. Uh, "The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world." Roll call?
Jeff Currie.
Paul Cochran.
Mark Flaherty.
Thomas Doyle.
Andrew Flaherty.
All right. Quick comments. We're to have our usual sellout crowds, so we're gonna skip past that part. Correspondence, we do have a vote for a donation that was made. This was a check received from PPG Industries, uh, which is a grant that will facilitate the purchase of two curriculum units, which will focus on science behind harnessing wind and energy and cleaning up oil spills. This mini-grant program is designed to support projects related to science, technology, engineering, or math. So, do we have a motion to accept this donation?
Make a motion that we accept the donation?
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the fact that I have absolutely nothing at this evening, so we're gonna move straight on to Ingraham's portion.
All right, so we have a few different items tonight. The first thing in your packet is a recommended draft for the 2016-2017 school calendar. And, as I highlighted in the cover memo, uh, the calendar basically looks identical to this year's school calendar. It does have a before Labor Day school start, which the Department of Ed is encouraging, and which we did prior, um, this year as well. So, the first day of school for teachers would be Monday, August 29th, with the first day for students, Tuesday, August 30th. We would, uh, be closed the Friday of Labor Day weekend and Monday, um, as we were this year. Uh, early release day in September for professional development, which we had in this year's calendar as well. We have a full-day professional development day recommended in October, and that also mirrors this year's calendar. We have scheduled it so that our October, uh, professional development day is shared with Rentham and Plainville, so that we can, um, share the costs of some of the professional development we offer. Some changes to the November calendar, um, actually were required, so the town has asked us, um, because we host the elections here, to close on the presidential election, November 8th, um, in order to allow parking at Freeman Kennedy for voters. Um, and also for student safety, it's difficult to have the building open when you have that many people from the outside coming in and out. So, that, we are recommending we make a professional development day, and we will host all workshops at the H. Olive Day School, so that the Freeman Kennedy can be open for voters. The 11th is, uh, um, Veterans Day, so we have to close for that. The other change we're recommending to the November calendar is typically Wednesday, the 23rd. We have a half-day of school for students, but when we looked at attendance rates, we have a very high absenteeism rate on that day. We have over 100 kids out annually, and we looked at that for the past three years. So, we're recommending that Wednesday be a non-school day, and that we have, we add one additional day at the end of the year, so that the students, you know, obviously have their required 180 days. Making the 23rd a non-school day pushes the last day of school back to Thursday, June The remainder of the calendar is identical to the way it is this year. A couple of early release days. The only other thing is that we have two tentative dates for parent conferences in March. Those are consistent with what we've done in the past. The only, um, sort of variable is the state is redeveloping the spring MCAS tests, and they haven't published the testing schedule. They've indicated that at the lower grades it'll probably be similar to this year, um, but we don't have the final dates yet, so we may have to amend the calendar if those dates end up impacting, um, being impacted by changes to the state testing schedule. Um, but right now, we're pretty confident that they'll be, they'll be okay. So, that's the recommendation, and, you know, certainly open any discussion questions. We have shared this with the Norfolk Teachers Association for feedback, and, um, you know, they gave us feedback on a prior draft, and we've made some adjustments to the calendar. I think, um, I think it's a good proposal.
I was gonna motion first, then we'll get into discussion. Do I motion to accept the calendar?
I make a motion that we accept the calendar.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion.
So, what was the reasoning for the Department of Ed wants, wants people to start school before Columbus?
Because of snow days, because last year we had five snow days, and so many schools were pushed up to very late in, um, June for their last day, and people were applying to the state to waive the 180-day school requirement, um, because they're having difficulty getting that in before the end of June. Uh, and so the department has really encouraged everybody to look at moving school up and, and having your targeted last day be closer to the middle of June because of unforeseen snow. Uh, they're not interested in issuing waivers to the 180-day requirement if districts get into some snow emergencies.
I believe they would be. All right.
And actually, um, Rentham and Plainville and King Philip are all, uh, King Philip hasn't voted yet. I believe they're recommending a prior to Labor Day start, but Rentham and Plainville are both starting that week as well, on the same day.
Okay.
How many, uh, you mentioned that the average absenteeism is about 100 students.
On that Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
What, um, what percentage of total is that?
It'd be, well, we have about 1,000 students, so it's about 10%. A typical day, we usually have 25 to 30 kids out, so it's about four times what we typically have, but...
I would think that having 90% of students go to school another, an extra day in June versus that half-day in, in November may not be such a good trade-off.
We can, we can certainly look at that. The teachers, the NTA really felt that that, that would be a better instructional day than the day before Thanksgiving, when you have so many kids out of your class, and, uh, we don't get a lot of quality learning in on that day. Um, people get dismissed early on top of the attendance, um, but we can certainly look at that. That would make the last day the 14th.
Yeah, I guess the question I have kind of the false point, just, so now you're ending on the 15th.
We already have two snow days in hand.
You only have, I can see this very easily pushing into the 19th, whereas if you're back at, you don't do that 23rd, you're now ending on the 14th.
14th.
Like, we just went, we just had two days now.
Right.
And so then you would still be there, be able to end on the 16th versus the 19th, I'm just saying the worst-case scenario, and no one in the world's gonna show up on the 19th. You're talking absentee rate of 200% at that point.
Yeah, it'd be high.
I mean, I see the logic behind it, but I just don't know, and is, is King Philip, I know they haven't voted, but are they also recommending this 23rd off as well?
They're looking. I believe they're looking at that.
Okay, 'cause that would be...
The, the King Philip, my understanding is that, um, they're in negotiations with their union, and some of these are negotiated dates. They have to negotiate with the union for a pre-Labor Day start, so they have to get that union to vote for it too. So, they're, they're held up a little bit in, in publishing their calendar. But we can certainly look at a half-day for, for the Wednesday, and that would move it back to the 14th. The other suggestion the teachers had, which we've done in the past too, is, um, that Good Friday is currently a no-school day, and that has historically been, um, but to reserve that as a potential half-day in case of snow emergency, if we have several snow days. We've voted in the past to make that a school day, and they suggested maybe indicating that on the calendar as a potential snow makeup day.
Yeah, at least I built in an extra day there.
Yeah.
Um, 'cause the only, just, think of, it could be difficult, just say for whatever reason, King Philip does not agree to this 23rd of November off, and then you've got people where they've got some kids going to school, some kids not going to school. I know we try to stay reasonably consistent.
We do.
That could make it a little difficult for folks that have kids up there, or for working parents, it could be a little, that's a tough day to pull.
Yeah. We can certainly check with them.
Yeah, actually, had, um, a parent ask, I think Paul had the same question about, he's got one child in middle school and one at HOD, and whether or not there's, um, any coordination of the calendars or consideration for coordinating the calendars across.
We do work with KP to try to coordinate them as best as we can. Their, the professional development days aren't all, um, we've tried to align a couple of them to have shared PD days, but then they have some that are, um, that are not aligned. They have a different number of days, and their early release time is different than ours. But we do try to coordinate the start date, but again, the thing that holds it up is, is that they're, this is part of their collective bargaining agreement.
Sure.
So, they have to get the union to vote every year for a pre-Labor Day start.
This, if I recall correctly, this was about vacations, and specifically, I believe, Christmas vacation.
Yep, we do, we have the same vacation days.
All right.
Yeah.
So, I can't remember the specifics.
Jeff had mentioned, um, something around going to either consolidation or elimination of a, of a week and a vacation at some point.
Yeah, the King Philip School Committee, um, in response to Desi's request to look at ways to ensure that you're not pushing your last week of school back into June, you know, 28th, 29th, um, the KP School Committee asked if other committees would be interested in looking at going to a single vacation in March, um, as opposed to the February and the April vacation. My understanding is that neither Rentham or Plainville was interested in that, um, so I don't believe that KP is pursuing that, because they would have a nightmare with families if the other elementary districts weren't. Some districts have done that, and, um, several districts that went to a single week have actually gone back to the two weeks. They've had issues with flu and illness increasing when kids aren't, when you don't get any break through the winter and no time away. Um, you know, so there's mixed reviews on the effectiveness of, of that single break week.
Yeah, last time the chairs met, that came up as a discussion point, because King Philip likes the idea, and neither Rentham, Rent, excuse me, Rentham or Plainville, uh, they didn't really have much interest in it. I was sort of ambivalent on it, and really necessarily have a opinion one way or the other. I think the biggest argument for it is kind of what Ingraham's point was, is the February week to sort of everyone go home and detox from bugs.
Right.
Might be a good way to go.
Right.
Well, and we also strip all the classrooms, bleach all the desks, clean everything out.
So, I think there's a lot to be said for that, um, and then it just, a lot of people over, they make arrangements every year, they go away every year, I don't know, it just seems like it might be more trouble than it's worth, and I don't know if there's any real interest in it, honestly.
I think KP was interested in, in looking at the possibility, maybe surveying parents, but that was for a couple of years out, it wasn't for, for an immediate change.
Yeah, it was nothing immediate, no.
All right, great, thank you.
Would there be any benefit of just looking at the days here? 'Cause you've got the Friday before Memorial Day as a half-day.
Yes.
Um, make that a full day, or do you have anything going on that day? No. And, and do the 20th, the November 23rd as a half-day, is there any, does that help at all? I mean, that, and then still do your Good Friday idea, 'cause then you can still have a emergency snow day in there.
Let me just think through what you just said, make the...
So, you've got the 26th right now as a half-day.
26, a full day.
So, make that a full day.
A full no-school day.
Full no-school day. The 23rd remains its sort of traditional half-day.
Half-day.
You go with your Good Friday idea of make that a sort of a backup snow day if need be, and then that could potentially take us out as of the 14th of June, if you don't utilize those days. I know that's dreaming, but...
Yeah, I can bring that feedback back. I mean, we can postpone a vote, and I can bring that feedback back to the team.
I'm just throwing it out there, I don't know if anyone's any interested in that, but...
I've been interested in thinking about it.
We can give it some further thought. I, I mean, we were also thinking for the, the 23rd too, as a non-school day, like I said, we do have high student absenteeism. We thought that families might prefer that, 'cause so many people travel, and when you have to leave Wednesday in the middle of the traffic, we thought that that might make it easier on families, um, and also on staff that have to travel distances.
Though, it's, it's interesting, if you look, the 23rd is no longer the bad day to travel, it's now the 22nd of Tuesday, has become the day, 'cause everybody tries to get out. So, that benefit isn't real, just...
It may not.
On the rental car side of things, it's the 22nd, that's the far busier day than the 23rd, for what we see, so for what that's worth.
Yeah, you might just move that huge absentee from one day...
To the Tuesday.
To the Tuesday prior.
So, Thomas, your, your thought was to change 5/26 to a full?
PD day.
Full day off.
A full...
A full professional development day.
Hold on, what do we got right now? It's, yeah, 26, yeah, exactly.
And then make the 23rd a half-day.
Yes. So, keep the 23rd at the half-day it has been, but also adding in Ingraham's idea of making Good Friday, so April 14th, that also sort of becoming a backup snow day, or, yeah, reserve for snow day type thing.
Depending on the number of school day, the number of snow days we have by then...
Right.
Through the winter. Hopefully all right.
But even, see, even if that happens, let's just say you have three, then you're only through the 16th, you're not going into that next week.
Well, if we make the 26th a full day off and the 23rd a half-day, then the last day of school stays the Thursday.
Just a swap, yeah.
Yeah, that does screw up my math now, doesn't it?
Just a little bit.
But Thursday, the 15th is really, I mean, we want to end school by the 23rd of June. I mean, so, that does give us five, we always look at five additional days beyond the last day, that would still have us out the 22nd, 23rd, which is reasonable.
Oh, no, that works fine.
We don't want to go into the week of the 26th, for sure.
If it goes into the 23rd, that's fine, I'm just thinking of instance, if you're just at the 19th.
Right.
Or the 20th, I just think...
Yeah, nobody wants to come the one day after, right?
People have mentally left the building far before then, but definitely that day. I mean, all the kids, parents, and everyone.
Yeah, once it pushes into the following week, it makes it hard.
Exactly.
Yeah, for me, it was usually right after April vacation, I was gone.
I would've guessed September 1st, but that's...
Only a couple times.
I don't know, so, something, I guess we...
So, we can just, yeah, we can table it, I can bring this feedback back to the administrative team and come back with some comments and reaction at our next meeting.
Sure.
It still has its plenty of time to vote the calendar.
Okay.
Okay. The next thing on the agenda is the quarterly bullying report by policy. I am, um, expected to update the committee quarterly about bullying reports and incidents. This quarter, there have been no reported incidents of bullying at the H. Olive Day School. There was one reported incident at the Freeman Kennedy School that was investigated, and it was determined not to be a bullying situation. However, appropriate actions were put in place, um, and the principals do annually review the district bullying policy, um, and all staff members are trained and continue to be trained in identifying, responding to bullying behavior. So, we continue to monitor our efforts for social, emotional learning in our anti-bullying curriculum.
How do we work with, um, busing as far as homes? I mean, you can, you hear various things about things going on on the bus, or whatever the case was, I don't know, they, do they know to...
Yes.
Do they know the process and protocol?
We do a training, our staff trains the bus drivers annually, our assistant principals do a bus driver training. We have, there certainly are incidents that occur on the bus. If there's something that happens on the bus, the bus drivers are required to send in a written report.
Okay.
They go to our administrators, and our assistant principals investigate those. So, um, but, in, in order for it to be bullying, it would be an ongoing situation.
Right.
The power dynamic differential, so there's certainly been incidents, I'm not saying we've had no disciplinary incidents of buildings, but nothing that has been determined to be a bullying situation.
Bus disagreement doesn't make it bullying, got it.
Bus conduct, right.
Yeah.
But we do have a process in place, and they do file written reports. Any other questions on that? Okay. Ooh, I skipped right over Anna, I'm sorry. She's sitting so quietly in the audience, I didn't even...
We got lost in the crowd out there.
Um, one of the other things that the school committee does annually is to approve fees and tuition. So, Dr. Tepper is here tonight to talk about the recommended, uh, changes to the preschool programs and her recommendations in terms of preschool fees, so that the committee can vote to approve those. Once approved, then we will open preschool registration. So, I'm gonna, I'll give you my seat, Anna.
Actually, she can take jobs.
Oh, you can take jobs, there's a microphone down there.
Hi, how are you? Good. Hi, Kay. So, we don't have any big changes this year to the preschool programming, it's pretty much status quo, we've found over the past couple of years, um, as we've, you know, implemented some of the, um, programs that you have approved, um, that, um, you know, things are really working well, you know? And so, really, the only, the only proposed change for this year is a change in the name of the Transitional Kindergarten Program. The preschool team felt that, because this is a program that falls under the preschool umbrella, that they felt that they wanted, they felt that this name would represent the program, um, a little bit more accurately than a Transitional Kindergarten, the name of Transitional Kindergarten. Um, so that's really the only proposed change. A couple of the other things that we've changed over the years that we'd like to continue to implement would be, um, the half-day noontime dismissal, in order for us to fulfill our special education obligations, our individualized education meetings, um, a continued 30 delay, 30-minute delay start on Friday mornings in order to facilitate a 40-minute common planning time, um, and then also the continuation of the after-school, um, the Friday after-school enrichment program for those students in that full-day preschool program, um, who require an extended day. Um, and we felt that it's been helpful for working parents to have that option, so... So, really, the only change is, is the new change. I can talk a little bit about the programs. So, as I explained in my memo, um, the preschool program basically provides programming for, um, two types of learners, are typically developing students, and also those students who have been identified with special education needs. And we have integrated programming, which addresses both, both groups of students, and the non-integrated program that really specifically addresses programming for those students with special needs. And so, we have, um, a three-day program for three-year-olds that operates on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday at a rate of $180 a month. We have a four-day program that operates four days, um, at $240 a month. And then we have two multi-age classrooms that run, one runs four days, one, one, one runs five days, um, and you can see the rates on the last page there. The four-day program is $324, and the five-day program is $420. And then we have the full-day program, which runs, um, Monday through Friday, from 9:00 to 3:00, with the exception of Friday, which runs from 9:00 to 12:00, and that's $648. And the after-school enrichment program runs on Fridays from 12:00 to 3:00, and it's an additional $72 a month. And so, really, no changes to any of that, of that, the times or the fees, no, no increase in fees this year.
Oh, it's good.
How many students can you, um, handle?
Yeah, so typically, um, we can handle up to about 15 students per classroom. That's typically what we've, what we've accommodated. We usually start a little smaller, Paul, because we save spots for students who qualify for special education services during the year. When a student turns three, they're automatically eligible, um, if, if they have, you know, special education need that's been identified by a team, and they've, we've gone through the process, um, you know, depending on when they turn three is when they're eligible for special education services. And so, um, we typically try to keep a couple of slots open in each classroom for those students who may turn three during the academic school year. We do a lot of transition planning. You know, we have, we have, you know, strong collaborative relationships with early intervention, and so they, for the most part, we're made aware of these students that are turning three with special education needs, um, and so we have a whole process that we follow in order to identify the students.
Has the population stayed relatively consistent in terms of program? I know it's a number of different programs, but a program as a whole, is it relatively the same each year?
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, we've had our Transitional Kindergarten slash now our full-day program, we've had, the past two years, we've had, um, a pretty high interest in that program, um, so, that's, I think, been our most popular program.
That makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a great program.
It is, yeah, thank you, yeah, yeah, yeah. We've got a great, great team, yeah.
So, for each of these rows, that's a, that's a class?
Yes, exactly, so...
Their capacity is 15 for each, but not...
15, 15 students, yeah.
It's not always a capacity, like you said, you always leave some room for...
Well, sometimes we go over it a little bit too, like this year, we've gone over it in our Transitional Kindergarten class in order to try and accommodate, um, but it all depends on the number of special education students that we have. And so, if, Paul, if you look at the color-coded, um, sheet that I gave you, it identifies the program, I can walk you through it if you'd like me to, um, as things currently stand, and what we project for next year. So, the first, we have Julie Gallagher, who teaches the two half-day programs. She teaches the half-day program for three-year-olds and the half-day program for four-year-olds. Um, and we're not recommending any changes for that program this year. And then we have, um, a four-day program taught by Alicia Whitehead that runs Monday through Thursday, um, and, um, Monday is her non-integrated day, and then Tuesday through Friday are her integrated days. And then we have a program currently taught by Jill Levy, and that's a five-day program that runs Monday through Friday. And then we have Ellen Versprill teaching the Transitional Kindergarten classroom this year. And then we also have another self-contained, substantially separate preschool program that's, you know, not tuition-based, it's, it's, services are more, um, you know, moderate to significantly globally developmentally delayed students, yeah. So...
Any other questions?
Nope.
We need a motion to vote to approve.
So, we need to actually vote on that, the changes suggested, so would you have a motion on that, please?
I make a motion that we approve the changes.
Do we have a second?
Second motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
We would love to have you guys come visit our preschool program anytime or any of our programs.
It's pretty amazing, they really do a phenomenal job.
It's really, it's a great place to be. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, the next two items are just informational updates. So, kindergarten registration for the 2016 school year opened on January 22nd. As of the time in the memo, we had 106 registered, students registered. As of this morning, we have 116. It seems to be tracking pretty consistently with last year. We had seven, we ran seven sessions of kindergarten this year with 132 students. We've got 116, and we're mid-February, so we're projecting that we're probably gonna have to have seven sessions of kindergarten again next year. We're monitoring it closely. We do have a number of students that are eligible by the town census to enroll in kindergarten that have not enrolled yet. We've sent letters to all those families, just reminding them, um, so we will watch those numbers in the next few days and, and as we prepare for budget and staffing.
Would you say 116 as of this morning?
116 as of this morning.
See if you have a few kids left.
And then the only other thing I had was I just wanted to update you that the, as far as the Joint Special Education Program Review with Walker Partnerships, the other three committees did vote to move forward with that, so we're all on board. I have a call-in to Jim Schillinglaw, we're working on coordinating some initial dates for them to do their district observations and visits. That'll probably be the week after February vacation, and we're still hoping to move forward with the bulk of the work done in March.
Great.
So, I will have a report for you when they're complete. That's all I had.
So, I'm sorry, that would be by March or by April?
Well, it's, they, they're gonna start, we'll probably have the report by the middle, beginning of April.
Okay, so they're...
They'll be doing the site visits and the interviews and the document reviews, last week of February and, and most of March.
Where, where did everything land with the, the length of the, the site visits?
Every district agreed that we were going to independently fund the additional hours so that we could have about an hour per program visit. And so what they've decided to do is they're gonna just break it and, and do four individual contracts rather than the one with the supplemental.
Sure.
It'll be the same cost that you voted and approved, but we'll have our own, we'll each have our own portion.
Great.
Okay, it's probably easier.
Yeah.
All right. That's it, right?
That's it.
All right, so moving on to committee, so we won't have King Philip or Technology, so we'll move to policy.
All right, so we've got a couple of first readings and an incidental change to go over. The first, first reading is going to be for executive sessions. So the changes are indicated in blue.
Was this based on some additional guidance we'd received, or...
Yes, MASC revised based on new legislation their model policy.
So this is just a standard language they recommend?
It is, and we actually had our attorney review it as well, and he agreed with, with the language proposed by MASC, and felt that it should be updated and included.
The portion after number 10 that starts with accurate records, it's kind of odd there's no time. Accurate records are proceeding, it will be kept and may remain secret as long as, I mean, that's sort of up to the...
It talks in the next paragraph about declassification, and it says quarterly.
I see that in the quarterly and all that stuff, but just, I don't know, I mean, is this their, this is right from them, is what they got in the council?
Yeah, it's right from the language, yeah.
I'll pipe down. All right. That was just the first reading, and then what's the other one, the tutoring one?
Tutoring for pay is another first reading. This is a new policy for us.
Yeah, we didn't, I didn't highlight the changes to this one in blue, because we're recommending, basically replacing the entire policy. So I gave you the old policy on the front, which is dated and has some references to using Norfolk Rec for tutoring and things. The new model policy is so substantially different that I just gave both versions. We're recommending moving forward the second policy.
Senator, there was one thing that I thought we discussed that you didn't see in here, and I thought we talked about language, reference back to the CBA, the collective bargaining agreement, because I...
We, we thought we'd have to make an incidental change.
That's it.
In our next round of negotiations, we may want to set a rate of pay for that, and once that's done, we'd have to come back and do an incidental change. But we're not renegotiating for another year, so...
That's, all right, perfect, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, so this is straight from MASC, is where this is?
MASC, yeah, with some small revisions that we, just language change.
I don't even remember where we got this first one.
Mostly grammatical things that we tweaked a little bit.
I remember voting on this one years ago, but I don't even remember where we got the language from. I presume somewhere, I don't think we made it up, I don't think we ever created it. Okay.
We felt that Norfolk Rec still does support us, and may do some tutoring, but we didn't think in a policy we should be recommending another agency in the policy itself.
Because then it, we felt it was somewhat like the school itself endorsing the outside group, as this case...
Which we don't supervise, or monitor, or oversee.
Right. I can see that. Okay.
And then we have an incidental change on school choice. Apparently, we cannot say that, in the original policy we have, it is the policy of this school district not to admit non-resident students. Apparently, we can't do that. Our lawyer said that that is not what we should, how that should be worded.
Right, because basically, the committee, you can vote to withdraw from participating in school choice annually, but you can't have a standing policy that you'll never, because you're required to take an annual vote.
Okay.
So your policy can't be that you'll never admit it. You have to have the policy that you'll comply with the law, school choice law, and allow students, but you have the option to annually withdraw from that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, because I was just trying to remember the timeline, so towards the end of the school year, we voted on that every time.
It's usually in March we make the vote.
School choice, okay.
We have to notify the department by the 1st of June.
Okay.
And so there were a couple of other, just small incidental changes. Stuff that we had to add, like the, on number six was originally number four, where we can't discriminate based on race, color, sex, religion, yada, yada, same stuff we...
Okay, so you had a relationship.
It's common sense, that was, you know, that's by law.
Okay, yeah, that's standard, okay. Okay. And we need a vote on this, though, right?
Yes.
All right, so do we have a motion to accept these changes?
I'd make a motion to accept the changes.
I second.
Okay, any further discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Let's see, budget?
Budget. Where we are in the process, we've looked at a preliminary draft of the 16, 17 budget. We've looked, talked, talked through a lot of the main drivers, teacher salaries, maintenance and capital planning needs. We've gone through the process, we're in the process of estimating those maintenance and capital needs, as well as looking to prioritize them. We're also have found that we're going to be saving some money in transportation through our SPED program. Unfortunately, those from grant and state funding will be in a decline. Essentially, that is where we are, on a task basis. Calendar, we will have the next step in the, creating the draft in our session tonight, and move to be ready for...
Public hearing, probably in March.
Public hearing in March, yeah, okay. That's it.
All right, let's see, moving on to new business, we have a renewal application for MPS Parent and Teacher Organization, so it's a partner renewal, so we need a vote on that.
I'd make a motion that we approve the renewal.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye. We need to look and approve the minutes from last meeting.
I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes.
If we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we are scheduled Tuesday, March 8th, for our next meeting, does that work for everybody?
That might be the date we do the public hearing, too, we've done that in the past.
Right.
Public hearing for him, sorry.
Public hearing on our budget.
Oh, okay, great, thanks.
You weren't listening to my update?
Thinking of the town meeting.
He can do it again, Jeff, if you want to. He'll do it in a different voice this time, it's much more exciting.
See if I can be a little more engaging, especially the budget update.
That day works for me.
All right, so we go down to the 8th?
Yeah.
All right, that's it, so we are adjourned.